Okay. We are going to get started here on January 21st at 6:00 in the great town of Lee. So with public comment, if you have hot comments, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, address your comments to the board, and limit comments to three minutes. Any takers this evening? Yeah. Okay, then we are going to open the public budget hearing, probably the final public budget hearing.
Could I?
Okay. About the public budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just a question.
Sure. We're actually, do you mind waiting or you would not hurry? Because we're going to let the superintendent actually go first.
Oh, yes.
I had officially opened the hearing because that's the rules. If you'd like to go first, Doctor, is it Shaq?
Shaq, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It'd be my pleasure. So if I have, um, I actually have handouts instead of our presentation on the screen. Are you happy?
Yeah, I'm both happy too.
What if I?
Um, what are any audience questions of the superintendent's?
I'll take one again.
Here you are.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Certainly, it's a pleasure to be able to introduce myself to you this evening. I have been superintendent now in Ice River for, I think, seven months, and certainly it's been a great start. And really, part of my first few months was to really understand not only the educational experiences, but to really plan a budget for the next year or so. It was somewhat a Herculean task to be able to do it, but I want to take you through this document, answer any questions you have, talk about the warrants, and just give you an opportunity to, if any follow-up questions, that we could provide you with more information. The presentation itself is really includes just some summaries of academic performance for your, like, reading, especially pleasure. But maybe if we can start, just so we can get right to the numbers, um, bear with me. Well, before that, I'd like to start at page 13, just talk about enrollment, because enrollment is one of the key factors in terms of our budget process and where we're heading. To start off with, this year, we currently have 2,083 students. That includes about 15 preschool students in our schools, and we anticipate certainly in Massway and Mohermet to see, I'd say, steady enrollment over the next few years. But if you flip onto the next page, we expect to see, and it's really predicated on kindergarten enrollments, some stability. Massway is going to be at full capacity. We're going to be anticipate to use every classroom. Mohermet similarly, we have, as you, if you were paying attention this spring, had higher kindergarten students than we anticipated. So from that perspective, we had to move art to a common area, and if the trend shows that we have incoming kindergarten that exceeds our projections, we're most likely going to have to make adjustments for music for the next year. And we'll talk about what steps we really took over the last several months to consider where we go next if enrollment continues to grow. The middle school will have a slight decline in enrollment, about 40 students, and that should take shape for the next two years, and then we'll have some stability around our fifth through eighth grade students. And the high school is relatively unchanged. So we just extended our tuition agreement with Barrington, and so we'll have steady, I would say, participation from Barrington over the next several years, and we'll keep enrollment pretty constant overall. They, I don't know if you have any questions about enrollment, but I wanted then on page 15 to just talk about enrollment change by three towns. And if you look on page 15, in the last four years, we've seen a decline in enrolled students from Durham, but that's really been offset by an increase last several years in students from Lee. And I think that's important when we talk about, and Matherby is relatively unchanged, but when we talk about the formula, the four, in terms of how we look at our budget, enrollment is 50% of that formula, and I just, it's important to talk about as it translates to tax rate. But this, you know, this is a slight change for Durham, and we're hoping that we'll see over the next five years that's going back overall, but I just wanted to point that out. It's encouraging that Lee is growing, and we anticipate that, if that's what the community certainly supports, that we anticipate that it continue to grow in terms of the number of students from Lee enroll in the schools. So I want to move on to just how this board and the administration looked at our budget. We had a series of, what I would say, guiding principles or budget goals. The first was to identify, and I'm not going to read all of them, and I'll highlight just a few, programming services and staffing priorities to maximize the educational experience, how do we continue to do what's most important in the classroom for students, and that goes experiences, really, put those in the forefront. The second, we started to look at what I would say is historical spending, and I think that's a departure from recent past. I went back to, with our staff, to look at expenditures over the last several years and say, here's what we budgeted, what do we actually spend? And that really became a starting point for our budget this year, and that really helped people focus on saying, what do we need? What do we use relative to areas of our program and experiences, and how do we kind of commit to that thinking throughout? I think the other part of this is to look at the budget in multiple years, and not just look at next year, but understand what's happening in terms of future revenues and certainly enrollment, and what, to really kind of understand things that are coming online. We just didn't talk about it, have a new contract with our teachers through the contract, and, you know, understand how that's going to play out and impact on future budgets. We have capital planning. We, this spring, the board looked to expand our elementary schools and address some space issues. And so when I came on the board in July, I said, we need to do a more comprehensive review of our facilities, the three facilities, the middle school, obviously, a new building, and understand the capital needs that face over the next 10 years. And so we completed a facilities, what I would say, building condition survey and audit of Massway, of Mohermet, of the high school, and presented in early December to the board and the community, the real, the report on all the things we need to attend over the next 10 years. And that's important because as we think about next year's budget, and we think about future budgets, we have to understand how are we going to attend to close to $42 million worth of larger capital needs over the next decade. So that's coming into our thinking about budgets, and as we go forward. I think the last point I want to make, that last bullet, is consider budgetary priorities in concert with impact on taxpayers in the community. And we certainly understand and support the idea that it is the taxpayers that are supporting quality of our programs and experiences, and how are we mindful of that in terms of building our budget? And that's a good segue to go into the numbers themselves on the next page. So what you see on page 18 is really the summary of our expenditures for the budget. We are certainly putting forward a budget that's going to grow by 1.4, roughly $1.4 million. It's a 2.65% increase. The, in a minute, I'll talk about the areas of budget that are really driving, what I would say is, the increase to, over the current budget. If you look at the default budget, it's really, the delta there is probably about $500,000 in terms of our default budget. So that point plus the additional request really led us to the 1.4. In addition, our second, the second, I would say, significant warrant, and that's down below, is the teacher's contract, the guild contract, at $1.1 million. That is, for us, half a million dollars or $560,000 is 1%. So the combined warrant for the teacher's contract plus our budget is about 4.1, I'd say, 75% increase in combination. So we, obviously, we have other special wards that I'll talk about in a minute, that continuing to invest in the future in terms of replacement of turf field down the road, purchasing the solar panels so we can benefit from the, certainly, electricity that we will produce and be able to use that as revenue as well. So any questions just on the summary of the budget? Because I'll talk about on the next page, on page 19, really what's driving the budget? So it's no surprise, health insurance, plan expenses for our staff has grown significantly. We continue to investigate and look for more cost-effective alternative plans. The plan that we have in place will add $210,000 in additional costs next year. And so as we look at contracts with other staffing that the next, that are going to come to an end next year and the year beyond, we're going to obviously look and prioritize health, employee health plan in terms of how we can look for cost-effective alternatives. In addition to that, a significant investment in IT upgrades. A lot of our school systems, and it happened earlier this year, as well as, I'd say, nationally, are dealing with concerns around cybersecurity. And so we are investing in improvements to protect student information in our systems. It's one big thing. We're going through also a cycle of improving our wireless system in our classrooms as well as our servers. So this is a part of it. And we do offset a lot of additional costs through grants, the E-rate, which is a federal program that allows us certainly to purchase technology at a fraction of the cost, in some cases, 30 cents on the dollar. So we're always looking for ways to save. We are underway with a number of curriculum initiatives, some of it has, we see one mandate about state around introducing a new ELA program, English Language Arts Reading Program, for our elementary schools. So that's coming online a year from now, so part of that is the work collecting the formal plan that we will certainly are required to use, so that pays for that and other professional development. The $139,000 for transportation is a continuation of our replacing of buses via, through a lease plan, so we're taking end-of-life buses offline, replacing them, and, you know, that will continue to that because certainly transportation is a big part of our budget and safety is important. The additional $430,000 is specific to special education programs and services, so programs for students who are eligible for special education, also nursing and others, special services that are growing based on the needs of our students. When you go to the middle of the page, the Novo Architect recommendation facilities, so as I mentioned earlier about the audit for our facilities, the report is really broken down into things that need to be addressed in the next two to five years, things five to seven years, and seven years and to 10 and beyond. We are starting to address this summer some of the, what I would say, key two- to five-year issues within the budget itself. So we know eventually we're going to have, go to taxpayers and voters for a capital bond to deal with some significant issues. But right now, for example, we are planning next summer to repair roofs at our elementary school, to repair rooftop HVCs, things that are certainly needed and necessary, so building it within the capital budget. So this is obviously not going to take care of the larger issues, but it allows us to maintain through this capital part of our budget, the ability to address things that are health and safety that need to take care of immediately. And I mentioned the separate guild warrant, the teacher's contract, and I'll talk about the Massway, Mohermet facilities expansion in a second as well, unless you have any questions.
I definitely have a question because there was a thing to do with the health insurance and the teacher's contract. I tried very hard to find what it imposed them, and the information I was able to dig up is that the health insurance was very similar to what they had, was going to cost them less money and us less money. So I'm a little confused what happened, and that the contract made, so the teachers, kind of in the left upper corner, were getting their step increase a little faster than previous. So I'm still confused why that went the way of the dodo.
So I, let's, I could separate the two ideas.
Yeah.
One of the things that came out of the new teacher's contract is actually a standardization of salary schedule. So for many years, it has been, I would say, in some ways, not provided consistency around how teachers move through, beginning teachers, teachers who are mid-career, and teachers who are advancing in their grade are earning additional increases in salaries over time. So one of the priorities was to standardize that so we can retract and main, first of all, hold on to, retain mid-career teachers and beginning teachers, become more competitive regionally in terms of salaries, but also to kind of slow down the inconsistency around salary growth and stabilize that. And that was a significant change. So right now, that salary schedule moving forward is standard, whether you're increasing from year one to year two, or increasing from year 15 to year 16. There's consistency that didn't exist before, and that kind of provides stability around salaries. But also, it allowed us to really adjust our salary schedule, become more attractive for beginning teachers. We're going, we anticipate over the next four years, there'll be significant retirements based on the number of years of service of the majority of staff. And so this allows us to be more competitive, but also not, certainly, find savings as retirees leave, be able to replace them with newer teachers, mid-careers, we'll hold on to. So that's one idea. The health insurance was a separate kind of focus. That was to look for alternative plans. And I say, I would say, in all honesty, there was consistency in terms of some of the point offerings that we had, in terms of what teachers have now and what they would have if they were a different provider, but there was a significant difference in one, I'd say, one other plan, and that was really the sticking point. I think going forward, we're going to continue to examine that opportunity, and as we get into next year and beyond, with all other employees to consider. Any other questions on that? So, I mean, before I get to the Massway, I just want to talk about, just on page 20, the revenues. These are estimated revenues, obviously, a billion budget expenditures. I say estimated because many of categories of revenues are going to change between now and October. And so this is really just a list of, as you can see, the $3.5 million, that reflects the Barrington tuition agreement. That is what Barrington provides us for enrolling the 176 students in our high school. So that's been a continued source of revenue that's really helped. The, you know, the school nutrition at $1.2 million, that's a federal pass-through in terms of money that we get for our school lunch program and so on and so forth. So the retainage is the board considering, as we get into October and everything is set, is to understand, is there things the board can do between fund balance and retainage to reduce the impact on taxpayers around the tax rate? So this is just the estimated piece of this. It doesn't speak to adequacy, because adequacy funding is really a town drug. It's not necessarily, even though we have it, it's really driven by the enrollment of students per town that are there. It has to do with free and reduced lunch calculations and other things that kind of take it off the town's total amount based on the agreement of how we think about funding, and that comes off the top, so it's not listed here in the aggregate. Okay. I just, just to give you a sense, on page 21, you see where our budget at 2.65% is relative to the last, I would say, 10 years. Obviously, that does not include the separate warrant for the guild contract, the first year of their salaries at 1.1, but so the combined 4.75 is really what we're looking at in total. And they're voted on separately. So page 22 is just really a summary of all of, what I would say, the funds. We, obviously, the general fund is our main budget, is $56 million, $2,463. The food service fund, the federal funds, these are all pass-throughs that have no impact on the tax rate. And, but in total, we list them out, it's $58 million, $2,091. So when we look at, on page 23, estimate the impact, the tax impact, for 1,000, you see here how that breaks down by Durham, Lee, and Matherby based on the formula. And on the following page, we kind of offer projected versus actual for the three towns. And you can see in prior years, we've been fairly close relative to that. Obviously, the Ria Val and Durham had a dramatic impact in terms of projected versus actual. So this is where we are now. We obviously won't know until October. Okay. So obviously, we have and will show the default budget. In this case, it's about $500,000 less than overall, in terms of what our current budget is. And I wanted to go through the articles and just touch on them in the following pages because I want to talk about the article that has to do, Article V. Maybe I'll start there because Article III is our budget. Article IV is, as I mentioned, the guild contract. So as part of focus last spring, Dr. Morris, retired superintendent, and the board decided to pursue investigation of expanding, adding classrooms to Mohermet and dealing with the cafeteria and at Massway. In Massway, the cafeteria is really at its limit relative to occupancy in terms of the number of students. And Mohermet, in the spring, we, because of enrollment pressures, we had to, vague had to, I would say, because it started before I arrived, consider redistricting some 17 families in kindergarten to balance out because we don't have the classroom space. In the end, as a result of that, we started the year moving art into the common areas, and we really had to kind of recognize, how is this going to play out in the next few years if we don't add additional classroom space? And so our architects did a review of each building, and I think the result of that through my effort was to say, let's look at the schools in entirety, because at Mohermet, there's significant impact around the ability to deliver programs and services based on inadequate space, and that's an issue. Two, given that Massway is now, I would say, full relative to utilization, we don't have the ability to move students between the schools, number one, and, you know, it leaves options that is certainly not aligned to our thinking around raising class sizes or dealing with modulars and so on while this goes forward. And so the architects presented to the board a more comprehensive expansion plan that would add classrooms to Mohermet, would address at Massway the cafeteria, expanding the cafeteria as well as dealing with some areas where we do not have adequate space to service children, like OT services at Massway and math support. And the $530,000 that we're asking for this separate warrant, we took it outside the budget, is to kind of finalize construction plans, schematic designs that would allow us, if this goes forward, to seek and consider, have the taxpayers consider a bond for that project in the spring of 2026. That would allow us to actually complete construction on these two projects to open for the 2027 school year, basically, open school with the additional classrooms and the adjustments at Massway. I think that's important because we know that the issue of lack of classroom space is not going to go away unless things change dramatically based on our multi-year projections. Two, we will be limited to kind of choices around how we do that, which I think will compromise the quality of education over time. And so we put this forward as a separate. We are hosting on February 19th, a community, I'd say, information night, and we'll start to send out information really about why this is important, what this will do relative to our ability to kind of stay on track with this project. So that's why this warrant stands out as a separate warrant, so that voters can consider is as significant as an investment for the system, so that we aren't each year dealing with how we're going to fit enough students into our elementary schools and so on and so forth, and actually deal with the need to have adequate space to provide speech, OT, PT, all the services at Mohermet. And that really is compromised in some ways based on the lack of appropriate space. Questions?
I've asked before, and I've always been told I'm asking at the wrong time. This redistricting and shifting of lines, I'm sure you know, has happened numerous times, at least since I've moved here, where even kids in the same neighborhood then get moved or they're in another school, and the buses are a mess, and it's just a disaster. Why not re-categorize the schools and do K through two, or three and four, and not have to constantly be shifting people? Then you just know you're going to Massway, and you know you're going to Mohermet.
So it's great point, and I'll respond the other way. When I arrived here, that had come up, and certainly, as part of this work in investigating the feasibility of classrooms and adding, part of that work was to consider if at some point the board wishes to reconfigure the schools, just as you said, do we have the space, adequate space, to kind of accommodate those configurations, whether it's pre-K, K1, you know, two school, or three, four, five, or three, four? Thinking about reconfiguring as an idea that would in some ways help the system in terms of consistency. So that is something that I imagine is going to come up. We're about to launch into in the next month a renewed strategic plan. Part of that work, from my experience in kind of investigating that, is a significant shift in thinking for community and for school system, and you need to bring people in to talk about it. I think the spring was an example where just people redistrict and said, we're going to, even though you're two houses away from your neighbor, we're going to send you to this school and that school. Second, in the interim, I'm working on a elementary school policy, assignment policy, that's going to be more consistent based on, I would say, our philosophy and criteria, and we'll talk about how we deal with the assignments. So we're just announced this evening, kindergarten registration, that's going to be centralized at the district for the first time. So the message is, you register to the district, and then we assign you to an elementary school going forward. I think what you talked about is something that the board will investigate to consider, but part of that is saying, do we have the facilities? For example, if you turn one elementary school into an early learning, a K, pre-K, K1, do classrooms have restrooms where, because in a school, an early learning elementary school, you need to have classrooms that have bathrooms, right? So it's really figuring all out the facilities piece at the same time you're having thoughtful discussions about how you organize learning in the system. I think the one downside that's come up around the K2, 3, 4, 5, 8, is that you're offering students a lot of transitions in terms of the years. I'm not, I'm not here to kind of expand on the pros and cons of that, it's just one element to that, but I think more so is how do you have conversations about the added value from all kids coming together from the beginning, going through the system, and going through, like we do when we get to five through 12. So your point is well taken, and it's under consideration as we go forward.
I'm glad here because I've always been told, oh, we just need to fix this right now. We can't, it's too long to make that right now.
And the only, I would say, it's from my 23-year past experience in coming from a district where this was because of lack of space and pressure on enrollment growth. It's a very, I would say, it's an important issue that needs time and conversation so people can kind of get to the right place. We put a task force together, we brought in a lot of people, we studied it, we went other places, we asked questions about what was the impact over time, and it was a way to bring people along because of, you know, it's how people think in terms of, this is what I expected my experience to be, or this is what I moved here, I expected from a child. We want to say we're one district, we have quality schools across the system, and how do we kind of look at it in a different way?
Okay.
Great. The other article, just to finish up, as I mentioned, would be to continue to set aside raising appropriate funds to purchase our solar panels so that we can generate electricity and use that for revenue. The second is to add to anticipation of the need to replace the high school turf that is near its end of life. And that's something through the capital plan that we had established to build each year, so when the time to do it, we weren't adding to taxpayers in terms of the impact of replacing the field at one time. So we've been chipping away and adding to that as well. So with that, on page 32, just after this evening, later in the week, I will be at Matherby, select board meeting. We have on the fourth, the first deliberative session, annual meeting, and then March 11th will be the vote. And certainly, those interested in attending the February 19th information session about the elementary expansion project will have information coming up at that spot. Elsa?
Well, welcome to the district and the community. I don't know if Dr. Morris warned you, but I'm the numbers guy, so I ask him very pointed questions, so hopefully you'll do as well as he did. Special education. Commissioner Elba said that he's, how does that affect our budget? That's my first question. The second, from your numbers, it shows that least student population is going up. And so I understand that, more students, costs is more money. What amount of revenue or money's coming to the town of Lee that goes to you to subsidize those particular costs? Have those been going down? Because we're seeing significant increases, and I know things, everything's going up, but the budget that we just, or the tax rate that we just set was up $2 in terms of the school rate, and with what we said is- school rate, and with what you've said, it's given us tonight, is going up even more. So, how does that all work together?
So, let me get to the special education question first. So, what the commissioner was referring to is that over the last several years, high-cost special education expenditures that are reimbursed by the state have been rising, but the percentage of reimbursement has stayed the same. And the money set aside the state budget to pay for that actually has stayed constant. So, you have districts submitting higher expenditures for reimbursement. Reimbursement at 60% is maintained, but the money to pay for that has not increased. So, this is shortfall. And they have come forward to say, we aren't going to fulfill the commitment to pay all that reimbursement. Last week, or I would say, yeah, last week, out of nowhere, the commissioner said, we're going to use special funds to at least make you whole for this year. So, I think there's a lot of outrage around, they're looking at other legislation, and certainly at the highest level of courts, they're looking at adequacy funding, like what is adequate funding from the state, that they found reserve money to at least reimburse districts at the 60% level that they are committed to and required to. So, that's that situation. I think the real question is, will that continue? Will we get those full reimbursements at 60%? Because we weren't getting the 60%. With regards to the funding formula through the agreement, there is, the formula has a two-year delay for enrollment that comes to play. So, it's really two years back that go into factor. I think starting to see the enrollment change, that's why the dramatic change, it's going to kind of hit over the next couple of years, is what drives it. So, I understand that, I mean, I'm just, you know, stating honestly, one of our, certainly reasons we cut from the last iteration of the budget, $1.3 million to bring this down to $2.65. So, there's a real understanding of that commitment to fiscal responsibility, and that was a hard decision for this board, the new September ending, to, you know, I came forward with $1.3 million reductions, and we went through each one of them, and the board accepted that. So, it's an unusual year because of the commitment of the new contract that is driving, and the teachers' guild had a five-year contract that really certainly didn't keep pace with the run of salaries, and so that's the trade-off.
The special education, how much will that help you out in terms of the budget of this current?
Well, it'll help us, obviously, the revenues for this year. I think what it doesn't do is really help us going forward, because we really can't count on the full 60% and then 20.
So, in terms of for this particular fiscal year, how much extra will Chris River get?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's extra, it's, we always are committed to knowing the 60%. So, it's, the concern we had was, we were banking on 60%, they're reimbursing it to 30%, and now they're going to make us whole. So, it's not, it's not getting more, it's actually getting what we projected relative to state reimbursement.
Thank you, sir.
So, the special ed estimate revenue of $150,000, not 60%?
I can get you an answer on what that includes in terms of on the revenue side. It could be a series of, I don't think federal entitlements, IDA grant is all bundled into this, I can certainly give you an answer as to whether that's strictly state revenue projections.
It seems really low, if it covered 60% of something.
I don't think that's, it's all there. So, I can certainly, without speaking out of turn, give you a follow-up of that.
Questions from the audience?
Okay, well, I certainly, certainly for me, one of my priorities has been to spend a lot of time in classrooms, so the last month, I spent a lot of time at Massway, just becoming familiar with the elementary school and the support by the community, and I think, you know, certainly that's a centerpiece to the town, and so, it's been a good transition. I'm looking forward to coming back and certainly answering any questions and be able to provide as much information so that there's that trust and confidence, and the confidence relative to how we manage the school.
Just to let you know, we have a committee celebrating the 250th, and we're working with Massway on that particular thing. So, it'd be nice if you could clear your schedule on that day when the fourth graders come out, and we have our little presentation and all that stuff, that'd be great to see.
I would definitely be there.
So, Ms. Dean knows all the information, so it'd be great if you could attend.
Thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
I'm sorry?
Can I get one of those hands out?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to the town budget. Would you like to open with comments, questions? Now. Come on down. The price is right.
You're the Mexican contestant.
What is the price of the question?
Well, that's a real question on dinner. Price is not right, yeah.
Hello, Paula Tate Moreau for Federalville Lake in New Hampshire. So, when I can't make it to meetings, I try to catch up on YouTube, and I noticed that the November 21st had technical difficulties. There was no audio. So, my question was, I think that's when the tax rate was decided, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So, since there is no audio, my question is, we don't know what the discussion was in regard to setting the tax rate, and was the town able to put money in to defer that? How much was it? Because I didn't see meetings available either, because.
She has minutes.
You have minutes?
Three minutes for the board to approve tonight.
Oh, great.
And I can see them. Can you remind?
I've been waiting until it populates. Yeah.
I'm going to remind us what.
See? Question, answer.
Okay, well, thank you so much for the question.
Thank you.
I apologize for the technical difficulties.
Just so you don't have to wait, we put $75,000 against the tax rate.
You put 75 against it?
Seventy-five. Now, spoiler.
Oh, you haven't spoiled it, that would lead to another question, how much was available, and what did it defer? So, that's probably in the minutes?
If she'll entertain you, you can ask that question if you'd like.
Yeah, you're welcome to come up and ask.
I can actually put the tax report up for you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Maybe I'll have a question while Mr. Robinson is getting a comment.
That's on the state, not me. Kick me for mine shortly here after.
They weren't educated, yeah, I mean, they were good.
Yeah. Extraction rate, get that a little further so you can see what was actually used. You can see the fund balance to reduce taxes was $75,000. You take out your veteran service credits, we also used $20,000 for overlay, the actual last year was 17, 41. Want you to see exactly?
Is this online, on our site, or will it be on the website?
This is a static copy of what I took from the Department of Revenue's site for us today.
All right, can we put it up on the website, in case anybody else would like access to it?
Yes, we certainly can.
Fantastic. It will be up on the website shortly.
I think the, my, in rough terms, the other side fund balance was roughly $2.2 million at the time the tax rate was set. And DRA gives you some guidelines as to how much of that to use, gives you some percentage recommendations that they think are safe and adequate, and advises you not to use so much of it that you get yourself in deep trouble.
I believe Mr. Bedby, it was also pointed out that we have some bridges that we're going to be replacing soon, and we kind of have to front so much of that money, so we have to make sure we have the fund balance for it, even though we're going to get the money back, we have to be able to dip into those funds.
And cash flow, we should.
Any other questions or comments before we get into more numbers? I think so that there were some updates to the budget?
There are some updates. Get to the here. When the overall updates noted, came when I went through the wage calculation Excel spreadsheet that I had put together, there was a fireman missing, and there were also some incorrect percentages, the state retirement contribution rates have actually gone down. I corrected those, got a new bottom line number for the budget of $5,686,401. And the cost of increasing all your employees by 2.5% as a step was actually $71,744. I believe I had given the board a figure of 67 or 68 at a previous meeting, that was in large part due to the missing fireman.
It says article, and then?
Several things happened. When I used just the flat 2.5%, that actually did not have as much of an increasing effect in the fire department, because the fire chief had a different series of steps and increases that actually were a little bit higher than just a flat 2.5% in one year. The reduction, obviously, in the retirement for the police and fire in particular makes a big difference as well, and that's why that came down a little. There were some other things presently, the town clerk's salary is very high, it's, the budget is showing at what it might be.
Do I remember that?
For lack of a better term, some things like that that affected it. But the new number I'm getting with this budget is that $5,686,401. That's obviously, the big difference maker there is taking out the paving and putting it in as a warrant article. I did talk to the DPW director per the board's request, he does not see any particular value in the capital reserve fund for paving.
Is there somewhere somewhere?
In terms of what he is, I guess. Couple of things I would like us to address. The Stratford County Regional Planning, I would like to cut that to zero. Based on recognition from the Conservation Commission, also the planning and zoning administrator, we do not get our money's worth from that particular service at this particular time, so I would propose that we cut that from that particular line item.
Let's see if I can get in here live and make these cuts as we go.
Well, assuming at least one other select person is in agreement.
All right, I second that. I'm in agreement, yes, sure, I'm in agreement.
The second thing I'd like us to consider is in terms of, I had a conversation with Andy this afternoon, and he's basing our projected revenue on the MS 434R, correct?
The tax rating report and the 434R, yes.
Yeah, so, I would like us to propose that because two of those particular line items we're not going to do again under federal grants and reimbursements is $383,567, and also, there's $80,000 being taken out of capital reserves, which we're not doing this particularly here, so we cannot count those as revenues or one timers. So, I'd like us to remove both of those.
All right, so your issues with the tax rate, is there anything else? Can we like do the, finish the budget up and then move on to tax rate?
That's not the tax rate, it's the revenue.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the estimated tax impact?
The tax rate calculations, you want to use a different revenue.
I don't use a different revenue.
How do we fill out the budget before we move on to a different spreadsheet? That's my main concern. Is there anything else?
Okay.
Only it's for Andy. So, I guess Andy's got the budget thing open, so is there anything else we need to change about the budget? So, you've updated all of the taxes and all the things for 2.5 merit increase in the budget?
Yes.
For the non-firefighters?
The wages reflected in this budget are two points, it's a 2.5% step. I have gone through and corrected some of the personnel costs as well. In particular, the police personnel cost came down drastically, and it had been estimated too high, and when I changed the rate as well, there was a significant decrease there.
Okay, so what does that give us as our final value right now, once we take all of that out?
Okay, we just close this. So, does the, you updated the wages spreadsheet at the same time?
I did.
Okay, all right. So, if you can send that out to us.
Yep, I was just going to go to, close this and move a budget summary for you. And it says 1% for a long time, and I still have it. It's not fast, but it's not as slow as it presents.
As it says, it's taking 10 hours update, and then it takes one minute. Okay.
Further away, I have to, this is slower. Taking that out, just, again, from my scratch.
Right.
To, what I'm showing is the select board's budget at this point is $5,685,21.
That's what I wrote down. I thought.
5680521.
So, if I, from the audience, any comments or questions about the general budget before we move on to the warrant articles? Okay. All right. Can we take a look then at the tax? Oh, my lord, tax rate impact formula?
Did you write down that final formula?
I did, 5680521.
Let me get you guys live, go to.
It's like a portrait from the Bible.
Bill Johnson's tax management.
This is what he's supposed to post.
This was the one that I had used, and I had estimated revenue at 2.5, and actually, I need to change the budget too, so hold on one second. Does that number again? And then what does the board wish to use for estimated revenue?
So what, so right now, we're using what things so that everybody can follow along with that?
We're using $2,500,000 as estimated revenue. Last year, the estimated revenue was $2,600 something, not the estimated, the actual.
Can you pull up the breakdown on that?
Um, yeah. I believe I can.
Thank you.
I'll say that. Close this. These are the various revenues and funds that we collect as a town. One of the big jumps in revenue, you'll see we get down to the page, prior to municipal resources coming on, interest on investments was not recorded necessarily correctly. In fact, a fair amount of bankers' interest had been reported incorrectly, just not reported, and that made a difference in the.
Well, it wasn't reported, but like it's coming out as part of like the deposits, so like just not as interest income?
They just weren't recording the interest income as revenue.
Okay.
And that's something that will be done going forward.
Line, I got it.
And we have, we have some significant interest even from our general funds, which has a fairly low interest rate, but when you run millions of dollars through it, it's.
And which of these line items do you think is not appropriate?
$80,383. $80,000, we're talking, taking anything out, so why aren't we anticipating taking any money out? There's no more articles taking money out. So on 3915, there's $80,000. I'd like to remove that, and I'd like to remove, I think it's on page number one, the $383,557. Should give you a total of $2,105,493.
$493. All right, let me get back to the, do you need to see any more specific revenues on the 434R?
I don't think so.
Can you just say the second one that he wants?
Your question?
Yeah.
All right, Mr.?
I'm probably wrong, since I don't really understand this part of it.
The 383 was the arm grant that we got. There is going to be, in the current one we're in now, another 371.
In the current fiscal year, though?
That we're in now.
Would you expect the one for the fiscal year 26?
Oh, very lucky. But, because the truck grant should be, is going to get paid for 371 or something.
In the fiscal year we're talking about, there should, you're not anticipating anything, you know, we're great to have it, but you can't anticipate something that's not.
That's why I said I didn't really know, close.
That's why I was just bringing it up. Ask the question and to find out.
I can answer to you. Appreciate it.
No, standard rule of thumb is to use your revenue numbers. I know DRA is from the most recent report. I know DRA is not as concerned if you are reducing your revenue numbers as if you're estimating them higher, so.
Well, I have no problem with taking them out and trying to be as honest as possible. Worst case scenario, we get the money and then be taxing the less. That would be great. So.
Okay, well, let me go back to the calculator. And plug in. And what this will result in me doing is recalculating the individual tax amount, although I don't know, does your?
Yes.
I didn't have time to play around with your spreadsheet, John, if I can put these numbers in that, unless I give them to you tonight?
Yes, it calculates every one.
All right, so let me just put that in, leave it in that. Revenue number and, John, was this one, I believe? Oh, and you've already got the same number in there. You've got the same revenue number that Scott calculated.
Yes, but what I don't have is, are you at this point planning to use $75,000 to reduce taxes in fund balance? Because that's in yours.
I think it's pretty likely the board would use something, but it's.
And then the other difference is the overlay figure that's there is the actual overlay figure from 2024.
Yep.
And you had wanted to use $20,000?
That's what we used when we calculated the 24 tax rate. It looks like you changed, or Scott changed the valuation estimate to $4 million.
Why is this nowhere different than that number? I just changed this to operating budget. This is what's getting here. When he does 637.
You don't have warrants in.
No, oh, that included the warrants?
I believe.
Yes. Need to change that, I'm sure. 5680521.
0521.
I'm sorry. 5680.
521.
521, I've got three numbers down here, so.
If you scroll down to the bottom, it's much master's 646, he's like.
Okay, I didn't realize it says, you have them all attached together. Okay, so we can have 505?
Yep.
So do you want to put a fund balance to reduce taxes number in there too? The board pretty much has always put something.
It depends on how much the unsigned fund, well, at least for me, it's, depends on how much the unsigned fund is, how much we dump into it. Because right now, it's, I think it's 2.196 million. We haven't done the audit yet, so we don't know exactly.
It's a little over two, yeah.
But the thing is, that's a job for the next board, whoever that happens to be.
I think it's probably safer to leave it zero. Again, if we overestimate, that's probably better for people than if we underestimate. Be more honest.
All right. Well, if Mr. Tappin is amenable, I will take these indicated tax rates and assign them to the warrant articles as opposed to redoing each one myself.
Okay, what is the, did you say was the new number for Article 11? 71 something?
71, 744. That includes Mr. Booton in the fire department.
I'm sure he appreciates that.
So I guess if we're onto warrant articles.
Yeah.
Some of these have changed, so specifically seven, the tax impact is based on the net, not the total. Is that what you're using?
Which one's the seven?
Seven.
Seven is the line coming from the balance.
Yeah, because it's my understanding we have to keep the gross budget, we just can't say it's going to be 77,000, it's going to be.
Is that which article?
This is the library?
No, this is seven, this is the whole array.
All right, so I'm looking at it different.
Number seven is the solar array at the library.
Yeah, clearly, I have the one that's on the internet. I would have to check out all of them, apparently. Very cool.
I got new numbers. Not dramatically different, but somewhat different than I had run with on initial warrants late Friday afternoon, so.
Why do we change the order?
Because of the amounts of the total project, typically you do them in descending by value. And I had talked to Mr. Bogey on Friday, and then talked to the municipal association, and talked briefly with Naomi, Town Council, and everybody involved felt that you really needed to go with the total cost of the project and then indicate, you know, what the offset would be, and also to please include the word contingent, so. That's why the wording is different. That's why it starts at 233,969, and then it goes to 77,562.
When, when you're finished with this discussion, I'd like to talk about Article 2 when you have a chance.
Okay, cool. All right.
So if the cost of that just changed, that just to be changed, that number should be changed in the calculation of the tax impact?
Right, the tax impact is not correct. I think I used 78 or 79 the first time.
Something time to change. Something's up to put down.
So maybe we can go to the warrant.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you'd like to talk about Article 2?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Article 1.
Article 1. There's a change in Article 1 as well, okay.
Added a cemetery trustee position.
Did someone just for one year to finish out someone who's leaving early?
Okay. So I guess for all of our viewing audience, we have a select board position, a town clerk tax ledger position, a treasurer position, trustees of the trust funds, library trustee, cemetery trustee, we have two positions and two positions on the, apologies, two library trustees and two positions on the advisory budget planning. If anybody is looking to run for those things, you can sign up with the town clerk from January 22nd to the 30th?
31st.
31st, the town clerk, if you'd like to run for those things. Okay, Article number two, this is Tappin.
Ann Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. In the past, any zoning articles have always included head notations as to this is the new language, this is the old language, here's the changes. Article 2, it seems very general. This is about adopting an accessory dwelling ordinance, and that's certainly a topic that's of interest to many people in town. So it talks about a proposed ordinance replacing the current definition, which isn't listed here. What is the current definition? And then it talks about what this proposed ordinance would allow, and then goes on to say it would be subject to various standards as described in proposed ordinance. This doesn't have very much information available to people. What is it they're voting on? Now, I understand, you know, there'll be a voter's guide, which is a very useful resource, but this is a new and complicated topic. This seems quite minimal. I don't have an answer, it just, it just seems very minimal. How are people to know? Because this is complicated. It's not that it's that complicated, but it's different, it's very different from what has been in the past, and I know people are interested in it, so just a observation.
Thank you, I apologize. We've been skipping over those because they were submitted by the planning board and Naomi takes you with us.
I'm not, I'm not sure what can, how much editing can be done, because the planning board has a separate set of rules from the budget that, they've already held a public hearing on this, but I can certainly relay the concerns, and if they can't modify the articles, they can certainly be made aware that the voter's guide needs to have a strong narrative in it.
Okay, that's fair.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
So can you also ask him to give us what the current language is and then what the proposed language is?
I know lots of times they show the current with strikeouts through it.
That's fine.
All right, just a dornier.
And would that be applicable to Article number three as well?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
So can we ask them for that as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
What was the second name?
Article number three.
Did it on number three?
Seems like it's the same kind of issue.
All right, comment about Article 4. So at the moment, I have a new budget of 5680521 with a tax impact of 505.
Well, we also need to do recommend or not recommend for each one.
Again?
Right now, it says select board does slash does not recommend. If you recommend this particular article, yes.
Why is it we don't recommend, doesn't it mean you don't recommend?
And we can do whatever we want.
Okay, so I move the select board recommends Article 4 with the correction of the total budget being 5680521 and the tax impact being $5.05.
I told you, I told you.
Mr. Rensen, second thought, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposition, one.
Opposition, one. Okay, Article 5. We already voted on this. We need, usually we need to read you that.
I'll need to correct the tax impact.
I believe the tax impact is correct at 34 cents.
I believe so.
So that's fine. Article 6, certainly we did not vote on, I guess, because it has a slash here. We have 250 for paving, the tax impact of 34 cents, which I have as correct. I move that we recommend this article.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
One.
One. Great, Article 7, which you have now amended to include the entire cost of the solar array and storage and generator system with $77,562 coming from taxation. Where is that? Two, and I believe the tax impact is 10 cents. Okay.
Says we recommend, but you probably should do another vote because we've changed significantly in terms of.
I move that the select board recommends this article with the correction of the tax impact rate being 10 cents.
I will second that. May I ask if you can put in the 30%, what that number is, and also the 50%, what that number is?
Yes.
So.
Would you like to count the like that for me?
Yeah, well, if somebody can.
Nope, Katrin and I worked that out on Friday afternoon, so I've got those numbers.
So if you just, so it's 233,6969 minus this for the 30%, minus this for the 50%, should get you to the 77,562.
It does.
So if you can put those two in? So if you can put those two in?
Okay. Okay, move that we recommend this article with those additions.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, Article Number Eight. I think we don't have anything to say about that, we've already voted on it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Article Number Nine. Also already voted on it, and I also believe that the tax impact is correct there. I'm not sure I have the right line that I was looking at. Ninety, hundred, fifteen, okay. Comment from the audience? No. There's...
Shouldn't it be ninety, not a hundred?
No, ninety was what we did to the transfer station capital one. Because of the eighty-five and the five.
Mr. Tappan?
Unless I...
John Tappan, one eighty-seven Stepping Stones Road. I think the correct tax impact for one hundred thousand dollars is fourteen cents.
Apologies, I was looking the wrong column. Thank you for correcting me.
Or disagreeable, I don't like that change.
Okay, so Article Nine moves with fourteen cents as the tax rate impact instead of... See, now I will move my cursor so I'm looking at the right column in my thing here. All right, and then for Article Ten, I believe it is eleven cents?
You probably should pull on this one again because it changed.
It changed since we voted?
Yeah, we did the five thousand and the eighty-five.
So that was there last time. Okay.
Was it there last time?
Yes, it was.
I need to get ones.
All right, Article Eleven has multiple corrections. Tell me what it was.
Tax rate should change.
Yeah. What person did it change? I believe it's seventy-one, seven forty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
And so then the tax rate I have is ten cents? Okay, let's let me accept that we move Article Eleven for a foundation with corrections of an amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, and an estimated tax rate impact of ten cents.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, even? All right, Number Twelve here, highway capital reserve fund for fifty thousand. I believe the tax rate impact is seven cents? Yes?
John Tappan, one eighty-seven Stepping Stones Road. General comment, as you're going through this and approving these and saying you recommend these to the voters, right now, for if you add up the budget and all of these warrant articles, you're way over twenty percent increase. We were just told that the school cost is going up by eight point six percent. I've heard that the county is up slightly, and when you put that all together, you're looking at a tax rate increase of well over ten percent. Twenty twenty-three, the voters saw eight point eight percent increase. Twenty twenty-four, they saw a nine point one percent increase, and now you're looking at more than well over ten percent increase. And my comment is not about any particular warrant article, but just asking you to be aware, and the voters should be aware, of what this adds up to. And something like a twenty-three percent increase for a town is a lot to swallow.
A quick comparison I put together just based on what God is saying about capital reserve funds, I looked at some other communities as to what towns typically hold in total for their capital reserve funds, and a big chunk of this is fire truck, but we are certainly very, we have a very healthy capital reserve fund reserve, and if all the warrant articles pass, we're going to be very close to five million dollars. A couple of things I looked at, we've got the highway equipment fund that would go up to four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. We just got two new dump trucks, we got a new excavator. It's possible you could not fund that to the extent you have. The other one that caught my eye was the town building capital reserve fund, which, based on the warrant article right now, would go to eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We just completed insulation siding and a new roof on this building, fairly extensive renovation, and a new roof on the library. You may not need to fund that quite as aggressively as you happen. Even the fire truck, I know it's very common to bond a portion of your fire truck rather than try to save all the cash, but just thinking along the same lines as Mr. Tappan, I thought of those numbers.
So since we're on the highway, when I had talked to Andy about this one earlier, I agreed with him, like, we got the two trucks, the town's portion is going to, for rounding purposes, be a hundred grand, which is a little high, and then that would put us at two something that would be in the fund, and then we're supposed to, it's been ten years on the one ton that we would trade in, and that would be close to ninety minus the trade of thirty, so I have plenty of money in it. And we've been getting a lot of stuff at auction way cheaper than if we had bought it new, so I don't have a problem if you don't even fund it this year. And then the transfer station one that's coming up, I thought we had always put forty-five into it, we were putting more into it because of the roll-off truck. I'm pretty sure that we've paid the roll-off truck back, because there should be about one eighty in it currently, which is plenty, so you could cut that from the ninety to forty, and then five from the assigned fund balance for the grant, and it would be fine.
Thing that's driving, at least for me, the thing that's driving those numbers is the financial planning tool. So if there's numbers in there that you don't...
I've always looked at like what the CIP was, and the financial planning tool was always a wish list. Like, we put a greater in it because we have a greater that at some point is going to have to be replaced. It doesn't mean that it's ever going to happen.
Well, I think the next big thing in there for you, at least your stuff, is the loader, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, but we're going to apply for another grant for that stuff, so, I mean, we'll see. But we just rebuilt the whole front of it and repinned it, so it's got time. It's not like it has to get done now.
I think that's what's driving the latest.
Probably.
So with Article Ten and which one?
I'm going to leave the bridge one because bridges are, there's nothing I can, those are expensive.
Nine and ten.
Nine and ten?
Yep.
Nine's a bridge.
Obviously, no.
Ten and twelve?
Ten and twelve.
Another one that Andy suggested we look at is the...
He had a few of them.
Town building. Remember. Put that one.
So you want to reduce ten, Article Ten?
Hold on, I'll look at all the ones that we have here before I like.
And my own comment, who you're comparing this against, these traditionally save for things instead of bonding for them, so I'm not sure what Brentwood, Deerfield, Happy move, or what I'm not even here, we're doing, but we traditionally have in the past, and it doesn't mean we have to continue it. We've saved for whatever we want to buy, and then it's fed into the money. Town can do it differently, but that's why our numbers are so high, because we're saving for things that we come up in the future, so...
Okay, so I'm just wanting to carry on. So the town building cap reserve fund is one of the few ones that's not coming from taxation. But we can certainly, we'll get moving that, but I don't know if that helps us, since it's coming from the unassigned fund balance.
It'll reduce your tax impact, but then you're kind of masking it going forward.
How would it reduce our tax impact? So tax impact zero.
If you change some of these other warrant articles instead of coming from taxation. That's what you're talking about.
No, I'm talking specifically about Article Eight.
You want to do what, Article Eight?
Well, one of the things on the list here is possibly considering the town building cap reserve fund, but that one's coming from the unassigned fund, so I don't think it helps, so looking at Article Ten, I understood secretly it would be forty-five with five coming from...
No, well, forty and five.
Yeah, so I think the way with the rate, that was forty-five with five coming from the, with forty coming from taxation and five coming from, right?
Yeah, but how does, why does that change in terms of what's on the plan for the transfer station though?
I don't really...
In the financial planning tools? That's something we went over already, so we can go back and revisit it, but... But I concur with Mr. Tappan, which I said from the last meeting and the meeting before, the taxpayers at some point are going to say enough, enough. They got hit with a nine percent plus, close to minus increase this year, and you're looking at possibly ten percent next year? Have you ever heard of the charm tarring feather in a run-out on a rail?
No, I believe that to you.
Well, that's right, you're not going to beat us, you don't care. Thanks a lot.
I still care, I still have to live here.
I know you.
I'm working very hard, but I knew so much, I'm sure you're going to say. It also cares. I would say that if Steve believes that we can move some of the things in the financial planning tool to get this transfer station treatment down, then we should do it, so let's go back to Number Ten. And looking at moving it from, let's see, to see if the town will raise to appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand to be deposited into the transfer station equipment cap reserve fund, forty thousand to come from taxation, and five thousand to come from the unassigned fund balance, with a tax impact of five cents. Jalen? Write it down.
You got it.
Yep, I got it. It's okay. Do you want to second that?
Did you?
I move that we recommend that.
Good, second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then Number Twelve, I believe was the one that Steve was saying that he would really fund me, he's funded.
Or you can drop even more if you want, doesn't matter.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Just be aware that the numbers that you're changing at the moment are not going to change that much.
I understand, but I am trying to do something. I mean...
That's fine. Well, the DPW director believes he doesn't need Number Twelve, let's strike Number Twelve.
Okay, move to strike Number Twelve.
Second.
All is in favor? Aye. All right. Let's see, highway equipment capital reserve fund.
Just cross out Twelve and just...
I will hand you this piece of paper if it makes you happy at the end of the night.
No, it just takes effect when I start to paste and copy and move them.
Okay.
So on our Number Thirteen...
Which is the solar energy system capital reserve fund. Yeah, thirty-five, I don't think that that number can be lowered or changed because then you can't afford the solar ray, in which case you have to keep paying for it, but I do believe the tax impact is five cents, not four. All right, fourteen, bless you, fire ponds and cisterns.
Tax rate the same, three?
I believe it is three, yes.
That's fine.
The internal service expendable trust fund for accrued benefits, which is Article Fifteen. I believe the tax impact is also three cents. Sixteen, the cemetery fencing capital reserve fund, I have as two cents. And comments about that one?
It is two cents?
Yes, I believe so.
Sounds great.
And then our revaluation fund is a one cent tax impact.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, Article Eighteen, money coming from the unassigned fund balance of twenty thousand. Comments? We already voted on that. And then nineteen is the money from the timber sale to go to the conservation land stewardship trust fund. Twenty.
This is something we've been doing, but I guess...
Something we've been doing, but really never voted on. As is twenty-one, I believe that we already discussed those in detail. Article Twenty-two, we changed last week to twenty-six.
I can probably calculate the tax rate for that. It's not an expenditure, but there's likely to be some impact on the amount we use for the credit will increase. I need to check on the number of potential takers. We either have three or four, I believe.
Okay, so...
Which isn't to say that more people will come forward if they get some publicity.
So if four people took advantage of that, that's about ten thousand dollars, which I believe makes the tax increase a penny.
Yep. They can put petty in there as a place holder, somewhat in this, but...
Okay, and then we have the submitted via petition. Are we recommending or not recommending? This is a petition article, so I didn't...
You can recommend or not recommend.
You can.
You have to.
You have to.
We have to, even if it's a petition and we have no comment on it. Okay. Comments about the library submitted petition article?
I don't support it.
Well, that's not, we haven't voted yet.
I know, I don't support it.
Okay. I motion that we say the select board recommends Article Twenty-three, the library building cap reserve fund.
Motion fails without a second.
Select board will not recommend it.
Can I say one more thing?
I don't think you need to say someone.
On the budget one?
Can you come to the...
Okay.
On Article Four, you have it, says the tax impact if it passes. Shouldn't you have the tax impact if it doesn't pass after the...
Okay, that's, I feel like that's a fair comment, I believe. Yeah, if it doesn't pass, it's four ninety-four.
Yeah, so I can add the estimated tax rate as well.
Thank you.
Maybe keep doing that for somebody, then.
Who, Mr. Steve or Mr. Tappan? Okay, I think that's everything. Any further comments about it?
Okay, we will, if these changes made, put a draft copy to the Boardroom Book App as soon as possible and then get them posted.
Okay, when do we need to sign this by?
The twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, which is... Mr. Tappan?
Yes.
I may have heard it in the discussion of the petition warrant article, but the posted tax rate impact was incorrect.
Yes, I live in...
Seven.
Article six.
Uh, they voted on the warrant article. Warrant article four.
We're done now. Can you say that we were on?
With the new number.
So the only thing's left is we need to sign the warrant.
Are we needing this part?
No, we're not.
We'll correct the warrant tomorrow, get copies to you just to. Give it a quick look over and then we can have a final copy in the office.
She can sign.
Before Monday? Or on Monday?
Yeah, before Monday. I just posted Monday. So if you want to come Monday. Just in case there's something. So sign on Thursday or Friday, I guess I'll just.
Well, you'll be ready tomorrow.
I think you'll be ready tomorrow.
I'll stop by tomorrow and sign it, and then you can stop by when you're free.
Yeah, I'll figure that out.
Okay, there's two signatures.
Okay, close the budget hearing then. Regular business, Mr. Andy, miscellaneous is all.
Yeah, I have just been thinking about budget, um, under miscellaneous, um, we had the new pay-in lieu of policy. The board had asked me to talk with the department heads and think about coming up with a different policy for pay-in lieu of vacation payments. Talked to the department heads, I didn't solicit any specific language, uh, requests from them, but everybody was in favor of keeping some form of pay-in lieu of vacation and felt that it was a valuable tool for employees in retention. Denise actually came across a language that was, uh, a little tighter than what we've got for payment-in lieu of vacation. I know when I went back through various older versions, our policy sort of morphed into this general, you can ask for payment-in lieu of vacation if you were hired before two thousand seventeen and, um, you know, you can have escort multiple times during the year, that type of thing. So I think the original test was pretty clearly that you could do one payment in lieu of vacation, uh, payment per year and if there were some sort of guidelines, so the policy that we sent included those guidelines, uh, made clear that it's a, it's a once-a-year thing. It would only be available to people with a certain number of hours and part of the thinking behind that is that if you've got that many hours, you could still take some vacations, so you weren't, uh, ranging more when to work with, um, even if you decided to take payment-in lieu of vacation.
Okay, and you sent that word?
Hey, can I make the comment procedurally, and I know you guys are under a lot of stress, but for certain individuals, I won't speak for you, but I have you in mind and myself when I work, when you send stuff on Monday, I don't get it. I don't get to look at it because before the meeting, so just like Rebecca just.
I looked at everything at two o'clock, so.
Oh, that wasn't it.
That was in there originally.
That was in there originally.
Well, it's funny because I downloaded the agenda and it's no longer linked from the agenda I downloaded, so I'm.
Well, just, just be aware of that.
We are and we both cringe when.
Yeah, I know.
Particularly today's cringe is when I come in and say, I've got a new budget number, could you send the?
So just be aware of that.
No, I apologize. I apparently, I don't know, there's two agendas for tonight, apparently I must have downloaded the other one. But no, anything comes after like two o'clock. I, I didn't get your mail at five-thirty. I was eating my dinner, I had three bites before running here. On the dark. My confusion, okay.
So in terms of the suggested, I'm okay with the suggested. My issue still comes with, we're setting up a system where people cannot take their vacation. I do not like that, so I understand that some people, stuff happens, like the things we approved, the police department, I don't know who the other one was, said with somebody else that we give an exception to, but if we are setting up a system where our staff cannot take the time that we give them for vacation, then there's something wrong and we need to fix that. So I'm okay with your proposed policy, but I think we need to fix that particular issue. So if we've got police officers, and I know police officers, that's, he's down staff, I, I know that, but if somebody periodically, year after year after year, keeps taking vacation because they're over, then there's something wrong with that department. We need to fix it.
I agree with Mr. Rebecca. Vacation is important, but I, I like the policy that you have here. I feel like that's fair. Is the two hundred and forty hours a reasonable number here, considering what people tend to earn?
It would be here at least five years before they could accrue that.
So. We have, but don't we have, you can only accrue so much and then you start to lose it? I'm a little confused.
Yes.
I don't know how we get to two hundred and forty every five years. What's the current maximum accrue?
Each, every five years, the rate goes up of what you accrue.
Of what you can keep as an accrual.
Okay.
And what you accrue, so.
But if somebody goes over two hundred, two hundred and forty, they start losing time.
So the maximum?
Well, only in a certain time period.
Yeah.
The maximum, it depends on how many, I can send, I can send you the schedule.
That'd be great. Does two forty, I mean, we only have two department heads here. Does two forty seem like the right number here?
It's.
It's lower than what the present policy is, but.
Okay, so if they have a balance of two hundred and forty on October first of a particular year, they can, or they. Anything over two forty, they can sell back.
Right.
But they give it once per year on October first.
Yep.
So you're not losing.
And then they, but they get their pay rate as of January first of that year, which would be for the pay raises that usually happen in the fiscal year in July.
So you'd have to use your credit card for Christmas, but you get paid fairly quickly.
Other comments on this?
I don't know.
Okay, I don't have any problem with this. And the, all the heads took a look at this and everybody thought this was.
I, I have not gotten particular feedback from all the department heads on that note. So said it's, it's more lenient than what we presently have on the books. The board still retains the ability to, at its discretion, say, oh, good Lord, you're in a horrible situation this year. We're going to waive the requirement.
Steve would like you not to say that. That's why you have that noise. Okay. Do you want to adopt this then? Do you have any other questions, comments?
I will give it.
Okay, I move that we, um, adopt the new pay-in lieu of vacation policy as written here.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would, um, I have no other business, but I, I would ask for a very quick, non-public.
Under A?
Uh, employment.
Does that?
Yeah, A is fine.
Okay, do we have anything on the agenda?
Yeah, you do.
You do.
You've got pay-in lieu, you've got also minutes that were tweaked that you haven't seen yet.
Okay.
So the, the minutes, uh, the confusion in the minutes was I had talked with Denise about my recollection of the meeting with no audio and I had also talked with her about the capital reserve fund, so the two had gotten mixed.
Okay, can I say about pay-in lieu of, since theoretically our new policy says you decide on October, that we give anybody else that the new policy would apply to till the next select board meeting to get any requests in?
Sure, if you want to.
I mean, if we're gonna, I, it's only fair.
You want to.
Okay.
I have a question then. Can you look at my request from a month ago?
Yes, so, so there was, since this policy was not effective on October first, we'll give them till the next select board meeting to get anything in, if it falls into the new policy.
Yeah, and I think Steve had a request that wasn't acted on.
Right.
A little while ago, um, this is Tom's.
Right.
I did check the personnel manual, um, right now we, we have nothing that limits it to one year, so. I think this is the second or third, um, payment-in lieu Tom's had, and I forget why Steve's didn't go.
He didn't need all the old requirements of the old policy, so we didn't talk about it, we put it off. So I would say that anybody who can follow up with the new policy, since October is already way past, can have until the next select board meeting to get any requests in.
The new policy.
Yep.
Is that?
So you've got Tom's in and Steve wants to.
Do I need to reset it or is the one I already submitted fine?
I know.
Is all, is all of them?
Do they still have it?
Yes. Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'll put it back in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else think it's on the agenda?
Have you looked at the minutes that were changed?
No. Yes, those in the agenda?
No, this is the original, that's why I was going to say, Denise, are you insane? Our fund balance is not four point seven million dollars, so.
Those are capital reserve dollars.
Dave, can you pass that to Rebecca so she could look at it, or you need to look at it too?
I'll share it with you if you want. Oh, this one you didn't drop down? Well, he was not here, so he probably doesn't have an opinion on this.
I gave you a pen with that, but you didn't.
So we're not in the other, I know. Capital funds, we're seeing four point seven, they were talking about two different things.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, then I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. All's in favor?
Can I ask a question though?
No.
No?
I just asked the question. Yes, what's your question?
Five B two.
Five.
I read this a few times, as far as I can get, they are interested in having other people to provide this particular service to the town. Am I missing something?
Um, I believe you mentioned like Comcast letter?
Yes, yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's my understanding, yes. Well, no, this is, this is a, this is a state and federal grant, um, proposal that they need a letter of support to go with their application for.
Is this to support people that are underserved in our town?
It is, and strangely enough, portions of Lee have been classified as rural enough to qualify for some of this money. It, it wasn't believed that, I mean, the focus has been in the.
Yep.
Western part of the state and the northern part of the state for the most part, but there are a couple of segments of Lee that qualify for this. Any of the towns that qualify under Comcast's, um, territory, they're submitting, uh, requests, uh, an application to the grant program and they're looking for a letter of support from each town that's eligible.
So what particular part of the town is not?
I do not have a specific map with that information. I can give Ms. Christiansen a call though and.
Well, if you're amenable to it, maybe Ms. Hawthorne could sign this letter and be done with it.
Yeah, they have a list of, um, of locations.
They need to sign it.
Um, I don't think he's signed this one because he wasn't here. He probably has no opinion about that. That's all set. Those are all set. Anyone have a concern?
Yep.
And I did review it today, but there was.
There are the side ones.
Rebecca, did you do a motion to accept the consent?
I did, and then Scott said, I have a question.
So we need to.
So would you like to second it?
I did.
Oh, I think you said a question. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you Denise for keeping us honest. Hey, apologies. I was apparently looking at the agenda that was for the budget hearing, which is why there's nothing on it. I was real confused. Okay. A, you said, Andy, for non-public?
Alright, yes, please. You got something on local business?
Volunteer of the year, sorry, apologies.
Yep.
Do we have anything about volunteer there? We were going to discuss doing it for this past year, but just the awards and are we still maybe not doing dinner or anything like that? What are your thoughts? I'm a little behind.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Just only like a monthly, monthly.
Because we had two nominations.
Aye, thanks, Steve.
Yes, Dave.
For this last year, no?
There were some just very general discussion and.
No nomination.
It's unfortunate. Okay, I don't think we even put it out.
There was a brief conversation.
But we didn't put it out, maybe in non-public, but it didn't go.
No, there was a brief conversation in non-public.
I thought I did put something out, but.
We, we may have, but we didn't.
Get anything.
We haven't gotten any responses.
So how about if we officially put it out there and give them. Yeah, till the next meeting, like a couple of weeks, maybe, see if you get anybody, and this is for two thousand twenty-four, I guess, but they.
And that, it's still a bad timing because you can bring it up in the deliberative session.
Okay, so maybe the next meeting, which is February fourth, I think. So yeah, if you bring us to deliver this session and see, you're going to get what, twenty, thirty people there that might have something to say, but.
Oh, yeah, we're not meeting before the deliberative session, are we?
It's February first.
Okay.
And I'll be thinking of you all when I'm sitting in my office.
I'll be thinking of you.
You will?
Oh.
Be nasty thoughts, right?
They will not be positive.
Oh, really?
Not positive. Okay, anything else on our new business? No, nothing. Anything else? Mr. Rebbie?
Oh. I mean, we're inside this, this is my copy, don't worry.
Okay, I move to enter a non-public session, New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, number one, number two, um, section A.
Could you do an L two and update us on those?
An A and L.
Those legal things?
Sure.
Please. Second.
For Ms. Rebbie?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
I'm putting my cord, okay? Trying to tell you.
I'll give them both sides.
Look, I can find some random details, but I'm telling you I usually can't find my trophies, so.
Oh, part-time deputy salary, salary, that's Jeff.
It's zero.
Okay.
There's zeros. Right, that's what I was looking at.
So what did they do? Did he?
I think it's just dumped in with something else. I think it's just dumped in with something else. Yeah, but that's not, you...
What she, you know, what she can do, I mean...
Yeah, but it doesn't tell you what everybody, I mean... Is he dumped in with part time? Is he dumped in there in the 20, the 210,000?
Oh, he is. No, I think, I don't know, I couldn't possibly, it's a question.
It's a, I don't even worry, I was like, it just gets in my head, and I'm like, oh, you know, where is it?
I don't remember. Was it like this for a while?
I don't know, I even looked at it last year, to be honest.
No, I didn't, this year, I just keep, I didn't notice.
I vote yes on police and fire all the time anyway, you know, because... I would look for somebody else's, like, well, wait a minute, does he even write?
I mean, obviously, they're in.
He's in one of the other things.
Right.
Because it's smarter than the rest of us, and it's taking a nap. That's what I assume mine is doing.
Can you get on the site?
Let me see. Make you for a minute, sorry, that's cool.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know...
Yeah, but it says the one thing that people were asking, and that was how much do they put towards the incentive, towards the tax rate from the incentive, from the right?
Because, I mean, it's preheated.
Yeah.
You know, so then people, you know, it's going up, and it's going to continue to go up, no matter how painful that is, if, if people see, like, this is why the majority is the school, and everybody else is only getting like a little bit up or maybe a little bit down. I know this, I was, I was caused by, I was raised by teachers, like. But when people ask, then they can see, like, people have got to stop going to the school.
I'll be hearing this, the school project.
But they don't come to this. I mean, they just don't go to...
This, we don't have any effect on, on the school. That is the one that's curious. Yeah. And if you can't, you gotta go there. Yeah. That or that one, because coming here complaining about it, it's not like, not that anyone comes here to complain about it, but they don't go there either, and that's what they call the office. And then it's like, go to the... Yeah, but like, yeah. Why? We control them, and you don't want them to... And you don't have to, right? This is concerning. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't ever. And never heard of you.
Where do you want to go?
Oh, you want to, yeah. I want to go part of that, and you did go.
So my phone doesn't know, it's like, maybe see my... It's fabulous. Curious to see if this has always been, how long it's been in the back. I was just curious. I love the fire department, I'm just curious. Because everything else is broken up, and then in there, you see like all these zeros. And so I know it's just locked in with the going cameras. Does it be a man?
So, first, why was James, which is going to June 6th? Police and fire. Yep. There's always been, there's always been, well, when I say always, I mean, the beginning of this year at least, that angle of last year, at the first hearing we had there, like, that's...
Yeah, okay, it's interesting.
But...
I know. What's this, just a line?
Oh, I'm just gonna, this is in there, and, sorry.
No, it's okay. I want to read those. Maybe not too many, because I've got a super long birthday. I made it.
Do you usually go to the deliver session?
To the one?
Deliverer session. Where they go?
No, try to go this year. What I tend to do is forget to write it down, and then I forget when it is, and then I miss it by...
For Saturday, pretty much every day.
I know, I was like, ah, that was last week.
So it's gonna be the first.
And my job is weird, my job is super weird, so.
There's a lot of, you know, a lot of people come.
I know. And, you know, people ask about things, and sometimes I'm like, the select board meeting is on this day. And if they happen to be, can I walk in, I'm like, see seven people? All the time, see seven people. So, but it's like a lot of things nowadays, you know, we have people that move into town, and they're complaining about the racetrack. They didn't know. Getting checked. And people are upset, you know, like, the racetrack's been there longer than most of us.
Why, cause that's still happening?
Yes, it still happens occasionally.
Cause I, you know, last year, there were a few.
It's just, it's like on Facebook, everyone's...
Oh, I don't say, I even have calls that I used to get.
Yeah, no, it's on Facebook, and the traffic circle. Now, okay, well, the traffic circle is crazy, but it's not backed up to George Bennett anymore. And it's not backed up to Emory Farm on Warford. It used to be backed up when it was just, before it was improved to the circle of death.
I mean, I remember it being backed up, like, back in the late 90s.
Yeah, even in, I was working on the other side of Portsmouth, like, 2010 to 2014, and coming home, I left five or 10 minutes late from my desk. I was like, I was sitting at Emory Farm, just, like, hearing.
I was way over the incentive turn.
Yes! It would stop at Emory Farm, and it was like, boom! And I was like, oh, biscuits, like, I should have taken 16 down at 155. It, it would be backed up for miles. So, and, you know, it just happens because people weren't here, they wouldn't know. You know, something like, oh, it's on, you know, they should do this, and we were like, we lived through that, it was not any better, trust me. So, all right, thank you, have a good night.
You too.
May tomorrow be easy.
What? What was it? He's administrator.
Actually, I know that, so I not think, I know. Ugh, I think this is somebody else's pad. Okay. Motion to seal the minutes for non-public?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I'm just hoping it's seconded, but not on the microphone. Yes, I, motion to adjourn?
Oh, can I ask a question about what happened on the meeting that the audio was going to do? You fixed that, I assume, right? What was the problem?
Uh, we're not sure. The, I have two controls that I use, stream and record, and for that meeting, the audio did not come on. The audio has since been tested, and Steve is working.
I suppose that some of the labels on the old videos are incorrect, like, they all say December 22nd. There's always have been changed. I've seen that too, but...
I have to, they always come up with the last...
Changed them.
Meeting, and I have to go in and manually change them every time.
Oh, that's super fun. Okay.
Yeah, because I got an email, some lady wanted to know, I don't remember the lady, something. Why would it not be doing audio? Because she can't, what was it, she can't read lips, so maybe you can fix the audio or something? Yeah, I thought it was pretty good.
There are some theories that it was killed because of what was being said, but I'm not sure.
Absolutely not, don't have a... It was our technical incompetence, not purposeful incompetence. Okay. All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We have a lovely, lovely week.
Enjoy the call.
Um... Okay.
Good night, Mr. Dean.
Night. Are we starting, right? No. Did anybody walk in there and turn it off? No. Did you shut it?
I'm going to ready.
I'm sure we got it. Sorry, here.